We will begin with Michelle Lesniak. And Jamie Weinland will be following Michelle.
Successful high school graduate from Wake County Schools from Middle Creek, and the mom of a son that will hopefully be part of the first graduating class of Willow Springs High School. I'm also a school social worker, and I've been a school social worker for 25 years with Wake County Schools and have served as a school social worker in over 21 different schools. Today, I'm fortunate to work in a leadership role for our department and provide support to our new school social workers. It is in this position where I have seen the negative effects of the decision to not pay school social workers for their master's degrees. We have hired smart, educated, qualified, enthusiastic, and passionate school social workers to join us here in Wake County. But when we are unable to pay them for their degree that they need to do to do this job, well, we cannot compete with the other opportunities that they may be presented with. I've seen the struggles to recruit and retain these individuals. I've seen school social workers that have been here for several years have to make tough choices to resign because they could not afford to live in a county where they are not compensated for their degree and expertise. Currently, we have 140 school social workers in Wake County. Every single one of them has a master's degree. But we also have 45 of those school social workers not being paid for those degrees. The school social profession is the only one in Wake County Schools where only master-level candidates are hired, but not compensated for their degrees. We've had an unprecedented amount of school social workers resign. When I started with Wake County Schools, that long, long time ago, we did not leave these positions until we either moved or retired. Once we were hired, most of us were dedicating our lifelong careers to serving the students and families of Wake County Schools. Currently, we have 15 vacant positions that serves 22 different schools. So that is 22 schools that do not have a school social worker currently in their building for when a student might be experiencing homelessness, or when a student is in desperate need of mental health support, or might be a victim of abuse or neglect. When a student is not coming to school because they don't have clothes to wear or shoes to wear, these are the kids that we work with and why school social work is so important. We remove barriers to learning, and those barriers can be a lot of different things. When a school has a student facing any of these barriers to learning, they're going to want a highly-trained, master-level social worker in the building to support those students. We all know that children cannot learn until their basic needs or social and emotional needs are met. Master-level social workers are the ones most equipped and trained to help students by connecting the school, the family, and the community. They're experts in research-based school interventions that increase school connectedness. They have the clinical proficiency to address the overwhelming mental health needs our students have been facing since the pandemic, and they have the leadership skills to assist all members of the educational community. I chose to be a school social worker because I truly believe that all children should have equal opportunities to attain the best educational outcomes. So I'm here tonight to ask that Wake County School Board please consider reinstating the master's degrees paid for school social workers. I don't want us to lose one more amazing school social worker, and I don't want a student or a school to not have a social worker there when they will need one the most. Thank you.
Our next--
Madam Chair. I don't know the protocol for this, but it's my understanding that our next few speakers who are OTs or PTs would like to read in a specific order their comments. But I don't know if that's permissible.
I'm not sure, because I've never had that request before.
It was just made.
So I'm going to call in order, but I don't know who you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So just, I'm assuming you're all signed up, so just let me know who you are and if it--
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tamika Harris, and I've been an occupational therapist for 22 years. I've spent 10 of those years in Wake County Public School, but not consecutively because of the concerns that we're going to present today. The following speakers, occupational therapists and physical therapists. We consist of 86 therapists combined, and we provide instruction to over 5,100 students within Wake County Public Schools with various disabilities as well as unique needs. School-based physical and occupational therapists are fairly mandated under the Individuals with Disability Act, and it is part of the larger federal mandate for school districts to provide free and appropriate public education. PTs provide direct and indirect instruction to students to improve their mobility skills to help them participate in their school routines and academics as independently and safely as possible. Occupational therapists provide direct and indirect instruction to students to improve their fine motor, visual motor, and sensory processing skills, helps them to access their education curriculum. They participate in activities such as feeding and dressing, handwriting, play, peer relations, and self-regulation. To facilitate each student's access and participation and their education, we also support our teachers, our school administrators, other school-based staff, bus drivers, and central service office staff in training and collaboration. OTs typically support two to five schools per therapist, and PTs typically support an average of 11 schools per therapist. Additionally, occupational therapists are now IEP evaluation team mandated to determine eligibility for approximately 4,266 students with autism. Currently, OTs obtain a master's degree, and physical therapists earn a doctor's degree to practice in our given fields. We maintain both state board licensure and a strict code of ethics and practice guidelines. To begin our careers, we have to pass a national board exam and receive national board certification, just like the SLPs. Our hours to maintain our state licensure exceeds those of speech-language pathologists and are equal to teachers. Within the past three years, we have begun participating in a professional growth performance appraisal, which is also comparable to the speech and language pathologists. Both of our departments are revenue-producing through Medicaid billing, making us one of the few departments within Wake County Public Schools that actually produce revenue for the county. PTs and OTs contributed to $8.1 million in the fiscal year of 2021, 2022. We're coming to you today to share our ongoing concerns with recruitment and retention of our staff, salary discrepancies, and classification inequalities, and pay for our leads. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We are going to pause for a moment because our timer is not working. I have no doubt that school personnel timed themselves before doing this, but we are going to make sure that it is, and if not, we're going to-- If not, I'm going to ask our board attorney to time and then hold up when there's 30 seconds left. So get ready, Jonathan. You might be up.
I think it might, I think it may be dead. Yeah, but it's not, it's not holding a charge.
All right. So change of plans.
Melissa, can you test it? It's not working. Yeah, all right.
All right. It's been, it's been with us for many, many years. Pass that down. So you will still get three minutes. Mr. Blumberg will hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds left, and he will probably just say something like "time" into the mic when your time is up. So please just-- I didn't have a Sharpie in my bag, but I did have highlighters. And so we will continue. So thank you. Who is up next from our OT, PTs? All right. Just make sure you say your name.
You ready? Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Maryam Barisow. I am a pediatric physical therapist. I've been working with Wake County Schools for 12 years this May. Every day, I apply physical therapy interventions to support preschoolers through high schoolers who have diagnoses such as Down Syndrome, autism, strokes, cerebral palsy, and many, many more. I work with these children to teach them motor skills so they're able to, for instance, play with their peers on the playground, walk in line with their classmates to lunch, and get in and out of their wheelchair when they need to use the bathroom. And right now, I'm here to talk to you about the ongoing salary concerns that exist for the OTs and PTs. Frankly, we are significantly underpaid. That, that's in relation to other healthcare professionals that work in Wake County who hold similar professional licenses, such as the speech therapists and the psychologists. We are significantly underpaid compared to OTs and PTs of our neighboring county school districts, such as Guilford, Chapel Hill, and Johnston County. And we are also significantly paid less than our OT and PT counterparts who work in hospitals and clinics in our very county right here. I'd like to describe to you my personal situation regarding salary as an example. As a PT, choosing to work here, I'm on average making $11,000 less per year than if I were to choose to work in a hospital or clinic in Wake County. Per my pay scale, I will be making $13,000 less than a Wake County psychologist and $11,000 less than a speech therapist in Wake County. Also, per my pay scale, I will be making nearly $10,000 less than if I were to go to schools in Chapel Hill, and almost $6,000 per year less than if I were to go to work in Johnston County Schools. To add to this, according to my pay scale, I'm actually scheduled to receive a $0 increase for the next three consecutive years. What's the impact of a non-competitive salary like this? It's poor retention of staff, which leads to inconsistent access to education for our children with special needs. Over the past two years, the PT department has experienced a 33% turnover rate in staff. Due to the widening gap in wages for our profession between Wake County Schools and the local market and neighboring school districts, the attraction to those settings is getting a lot higher. The Department of Public Instruction held a board meeting in November last year. In it, they specifically charged North Carolina school districts to provide competitive compensation for OTs and PTs based on their specific local market value. To rectify this, we're asking that you align Wake County OTs and PTs with the Wake County job market value and be comparable to our neighboring school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker? Come on up and please introduce yourself.
My name is Katie Willett, and I have been an OT with Wake County Schools for seven and a half years. There are significant discrepancies OTs and PTs face when compared to service providers with similar roles, such as speech therapists within our county and across the state. As previously stated, masters or doctorate degrees are required in addition to our state licensure to practice as an occupational or physical therapist. Despite our licensure, comparable roles, and higher levels of education, OTs and PTs are positioned on the classified scale. Because of this, our work calendars, pay, and additional compensation do not align with the roles and responsibilities we complete. Certified staff work on the Certified Instructional Staff Calendar. Wake County PTs and OTs follow the Central Services Administrative and Clerical Staff Calendar, despite the majority of our work being direct instruction to students. Based on these calendars, PTs and OTs are required to work at least three to four additional days per year as compared to our certified counterparts. Over the course of a 30-year career within Wake County, OTs and PTs lose between 90 to 120 additional annual leave days when compared to other certified staff, or approximately four months of leave that could be used towards retirement or paid time off. While our roles and responsibilities, performance appraisals, and licensure mirror our certified counterparts, our compensation does not. Conservatively, over the course of an OT or PT's 30-year career, this discrepancy equates to over $170,000, based on current pay scales. These pay differences affect more than just our immediate salaries. Our average final compensation as a career therapist is also compressed during our retirement. Similarly, OTs and PTs are not included in bonuses awarded to other professionals. As an example, during the 2021-2022 school year, OTs and PTs were required to complete training sessions with other certified staff members because we provide direct student intervention. Certified staff members were reimbursed $1,000 for this training. When OTs and PTs asked about that pay, we were told we would not be receiving it because we're classified staff. We have reached out to our Human Resources Department on multiple occasions regarding ongoing inequities with pay and calendars. We are informed to advocate and pursue changes with our state legislatures, which we have for over 10 years. 10 years. Boards of Education and surrounding LEAs, such as Chapel Hill Carrow, Johnston County, and Guilford County, have recognized the flaws and inequities and have enacted changes within their LEAs. They took action by putting the PTs and OTs on certified calendars and putting these therapists on the SLP pay scale. Chatham, Durham, and Alamance are currently conducting salary studies. As the largest and most progressive district in the state, Wake County needs to follow suit. Wake County sees the value in our state licenses and certification when recouping money for the district based on the direct student interventions we as OTs and PTs provide. When we ask these licenses to be recognized through compensation, calendar, and equality to our peers, Wake County conveniently seems to forget these licenses exist.
Hi, my name's Karen Merchant. I've worked in special education for 19 years, starting my journey as a special education teacher before shifting to my role in occupational therapy. Over the last several years, staffing concerns within the OT and PT departments have impacted service delivery for our students and our ability to support the educational teams that we work collaboratively with. For the OT and PT departments, qualified individuals are available for employment, but therapists do not accept the positions because the salary is too low or positions are not allocated to expand our departments. We are hopeful to continue to hire and retain highly-qualified staff, but we need your help to make a desirable salary schedule so that we can compete with surrounding counties to hire the best therapist and provide the best services to our special students. OT and PT departments have traditionally been understaffed, which means current staff are responsible for workloads that exceed the guidelines outlined by NCDPI. Understaffing within PT departments results in concerns with the safety and mobility of students, delays with staff training, delays with delivery of necessary equipment, and may limit some of our most unique students' access to their least restrictive environments. OT services that are unable to be provided due to staffing impact participation and independence in core academics and daily routines. In addition, OTs are unable to provide much-needed support for self-regulation and sensory processing, which affects the positive engagement of some of our most neurodiverse learners. Inadequate staffing leaves our special education staff unsupported, and the students deny their legally mandated, but poorly-funded, free and appropriate public education. Wake County is then financially responsible for funding compensatory services, which are often provided by contractors at much higher hourly rates. Delays in the provision of services or inability to provide related services also erodes family relationships, which can result in due process or litigation. Turnover rates impact staffing and can create shortages in experienced staff needed to support the onboarding of new hires. Currently, 50% of the PT department and 27% of the OT department has less than five years' experience as a school-based therapist. Experienced therapists may not have time in their workdays to provide mentorship because of the demands that come with the high workloads. Both departments would like to thank you, the board, for the three additional positions provided in last year's budget and encourage you to uphold the agreement to provide additional positions to each department in the upcoming budget. Adequate staff positions, contract and contract OT and PT positions are imperative to providing quality services to our students and to supporting our schools. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Callie Boyett, and I've been a physical therapist in Wake County Schools for the last 13 and a half years. I spent my first few years serving schools in North and Central Raleigh and have been serving the schools of Knightdale, Wendell, and Zebulon over the last 10 years. I'm currently serving as an area lead for the PT department, and I offer mentorship to the PT staff that serve the northeastern part of the county. When I started working for Wake County, I developed an immediate passion for school-based practice. I'd always imagined that one day I would apply for it and hopefully become the lead PT in this county. My vision changed drastically when I learned that moving into the lead PT position is considered a lateral move. Our department has multiple exceptionally qualified individuals who would make amazing leaders for our department. Yet, the lead PT position has been vacant for more than two years now. The fact is, no one wants to take on significantly more responsibility and liability for no additional pay. The lead PT is responsible for managing a staff of 21 therapists and services to nearly 1,000 students. The lead OT oversees 67 therapists and services to 4,300 students. These roles are completely administrative within special education, and there are no school-based services typically completed by the lead. The PT and OT leads are responsible for hiring, support, and supervision of staff, including completing performance appraisals and managing contract staff. They also manage the department budget, support regular and special education initiatives, and collaborate with school and central office administration to support the students and staff in accordance with the larger scope of special education services. I'd like you to imagine for a minute asking a classroom teacher to take over the role of principal at their school for no additional pay. In fact, under the current terms, an OT or a PT could be asked to lead their department and make less money than many of those they supervise. The PT and OT departments in Wake County are among the largest in the state and are significantly larger than would be typically found in a hospital or outpatient clinic setting. The leaders of these departments deserve to be fairly compensated and respected for the service they provide. Multiple other smaller counties in North Carolina have already taken the step to provide lead PTs and OTs with additional pay, and we hope that Wake County will recognize that a leadership position in this county comes with significant responsibility due to our large student population, and that should not go uncompensated. We are asking that in the upcoming budget, you adjust the PT and OT lead salaries to be competitive in the Wake County market relative to a team supervisor position in order to recruit and retain a qualified candidate for the PT lead position. Thank you.
Our next speaker that I have is Elizabeth-- Oh, no, you guys are-- You're Jamie.
I'm the last one, I promise.
All right. And then Elizabeth--
Very excited to talk to you.
After Jamie, you're certainly not the last speaker. But the-- Yes, thank you for being here.
Last one of us, I promise. Good evening. My name is Jamie Weinland, and I have been an occupational therapist for 23 years. Six years ago, I stood right here advocating for equal pay and treatment for the OT and PT departments. After speaking to the board, answering many board follow-up questions, and making it to the top fold of the News &amp; Observer, the result was a substantial pay bump for staff whose salary had been significantly compressed by the year spent on a banned schedule. We were moved to the speech therapy pay scale and were told by Kathy Chantos that all future adjustments will mirror that of speech. It saddens me to stand here again and tell you how this has slowly eroded over the last six years. Year after year, we wonder why we are treated so differently than our certified counterparts. Currently, the governor's proposed pay increases and the pay increases that you are discussing tonight for certified staff are significantly higher than classified. Yesterday, the WRL article that covered who qualifies for the proposed raises states, and I quote, "Those other educators include school psychologists, guidance counselors, speech-language pathologists, and audiologists." Just because you don't legally have to pay us the same doesn't mean you shouldn't. The only difference between our licensure and speech therapy licensure is one additional form through DPI for an educational license. Is that a good enough reason to pay our team significantly less money than our Wake County colleagues? I guarantee you, the OTs and PTs are willing to fill out this form if given a chance. Both of our departments have been actively working at the state level to officially get our classification changed to certified, but have been met with cool response. This has been a greater-than-a-10-years effort. These issues contradict the third priority of the strategic plan. We will prioritize establishing structures and processes to provide timely and consistent service for every student. And core belief number three of well-supported, highly-effective, and dedicated staff are essential to success for all students. OTs and PTs can work in a wide variety of settings, and we choose to be here. We love working in the schools, with the kids, in their natural environment. But if we aren't supported by you, why should we stay? We urge you to consider the information we are presenting while developing the draft budget for all subsequent academic years. We urge you to consider this critical information, which directly affix Wake County's ability to recruit and retain highly-qualified staff. We are asking you to better understand the salary inequities that surrounding LEAs are acting upon by establishing competitive and reasonable growth with salaries. We are not asking you to make a certified staff, but we are asking you to treat us as such. We are asking you to value and respect us as professionals. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Elizabeth Amy Amay.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Amy, and I've worked since 1994 as a school social worker with Wake County Public Schools. I'm grateful to be currently working at an awesome school called Forestville Road Elementary School in Knightdale for the amazing Ms. Jessie Hafner and Ms. Patricia Owen. I am also serving part-time right now at Windell Middle School along with another school social worker due to they do not have a social worker at that school for the lack of master's pay. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have worked in such a progressive and excellent school system and to have been a student of Wake County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to continue the calls of my fellow school social workers to restore master's pay. Our department has incredibly talented, motivated, and driven women and men who work tirelessly on behalf of our students, families, and staff. Our work is often unseen, and we work with so many people whose voices are unheard. Voices unheard, but not unimportant. We see, as we know that you do, that there is as much promise and potential in the student living in an overcrowded motel room as there is for the student living in a million-dollar home. As school social workers, we have the opportunity to serve all students and families because all students and families, regardless of income or race or religion, have times in their lives when they need extra support, and school social workers are a big part of this. We work as members of a team with incredible school counselors, school psychologists, school nurses every day, and I'm grateful to these amazing people and very happy that they are being compensated for the degrees that they hold and the work that they do. It is time that our county steps up and does the same for school social workers and teachers. I believe in the power of social work, and you should too. When there's a crisis at a school, believe me, the school social worker is a person you want to have on hand. School social workers are daily involved in threat assessments and screenings for suicide and self-injury and child abuse and neglect. We work to interrupt the cycle of violence and prevent harm. We support students in social-emotional learning. We connect families and students with mental health services. We link families with resources such as food and furniture, clothing, transportation, domestic violence support. We spend a lot of time serving families without permanent housing and set up transportation and resources to help them. When our public conversations turn to school shootings and guns on campus and people throw up their hands because there seems to be no solutions, remember that having school social workers in our schools is a vital tool to keeping our schools safe. There's no one answer, but we are a vital piece of that. I believe in the power of prevention and public education, and I believe in the power of social work. In order to continue to attract and keep staff, we must restore master's pay in Wake County Public Schools. I believe that you can do it, and we must do it.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. We now turn to our off-agenda speakers. Just a reminder, the timer has been changed due to technical difficulties. So please keep an eye out for the 30 seconds and for the jaunty tones of Mr. Blumberg's phone. Our first speaker for off-agenda topics is May Mitchell, followed by Robin Dodsworth.
Hi. Can you all hear me okay? I have a low voice. Thanks. I'm using my time to speak as a Wake County citizen and parent who has two school-aged children. One of the reasons we've been very intentional in sending our children to public schools is that it is one of the few places that truly reflects the diverse community that we live in. And that is something that we're incredibly grateful for. Last Tuesday, the House K-12 Education Committee gave a favorable vote to HB 187. I would like to request the school board to follow Durham Public School Systems' action in creating a resolution against HB 187. The Public School Forum of North Carolina said HB 187 would limit educators' ability to discuss the reality of race-- to discuss the reality of racism in the United States, would restrict students' engagement with history and current events, and would hinder districts' efforts to understand and tackle the root cause of inequities in our schools. We must ask, what problem is actually being solved through the legislation? How does this legislation promote equality when it inherently discriminates against certain groups and topics? The only way to truly achieve equality is to bravely and honestly reckon with our country's complicated past and present. I hope that as a parent and as a community, we can support our teachers and provide tools to educate our children rather than legislate on an agenda based on fear and misinformation. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Robin Dodsworth, and following Ms. Dodsworth is Michelle Wilson.
Hi. I have two children at Wiley Elementary. I'm also a professor of linguistics at NC State, which means I study the science of language. My four-year-old son is in the wonderful preschool class at Wiley, which by design has a mix of deaf students and hearing students. The classroom is supposed to have an American Sign Language interpreter, someone who can give the deaf children exposure to fluent ASL and thereby give them equitable preparation for kindergarten. I was surprised to learn that this position has remained unfilled for the entire school year because there's a shortage of interpreters who are able or willing to work in schools. I know from, from speaking with people in the school system that they care about the problem, including Mr. Hershey, Renita Hunter in Dr. Ashburn's office, Don Newman, and Jenna Ramsey in the Office of Early Learning. I'd like to tell you why the absence of an ASL interpreter is a crisis for our deaf children and what we can do about it. First, why is it a crisis? Signed languages, including ASL, are full languages like English or Japanese. Most deaf children don't learn ASL at home because their parents don't know it, so the children have to acquire it as their first language in preschool. In some unfortunate cases, as in the Wiley classroom this year, deaf children don't learn ASL well during early childhood because there's no one to give them constant rich exposure to fluent ASL. They have to learn it later. Crucially, research shows that this interferes with their later acquisition of English, not ASL only, but English. They never acquire the complexities of English in the way that they would if they acquired ASL earlier, and they never learn to read as well. This is because when we have consistent exposure to a language, spoken or signed, fluently during our early years, we develop the cognitive machinery we need to learn our first language and to learn a second language. Relatedly, if our deaf kids don't have fluency with ASL, they won't benefit nearly as much from having an interpreter with them in kindergarten. They won't be able to communicate well with anyone at all. This is a big equity problem. What we can do about it is get our kids in the company of someone who uses ASL fluently with them. Three- and four-year-old children have amazing brains. They soak up language and somehow acquire its mind-bending complexity as long as they're immersed in it. I've suggested that we change the interpreter contract so that we can hire someone part-time for the rest of this school year, even just a couple days a week. Next year, we've got to have a full-time person. Another idea is to partner with either community volunteers who use ASL or with the School for the Deaf in Wilson, either during the school year or during the summer. As a linguist and a mother, I know that our kids at Wiley need regular exposure to ASL. This is the only way to give them an equitable education. Thank you.
Michelle Wilson, followed by Jerry Hatzel.
My name's Michelle Wilson, and I'm a mom of twin sixth graders at West Carey Middle School, and I'm also the advocacy chair on their PTA, and I'm a substitute teacher at the school. I wanted to speak here tonight because West Carey Middle School has been moved down the renovation list for too long now. The building is the original building from the 1960s, and it is long overdue real changes. There are schools that have been built after us that have already been rebuilt. The plumbing is the original plumbing in our school, and the bathrooms break constantly. There is water damage on the walls of some of the classrooms. The HVAC doesn't work consistently in most of the halls. There is a weird damp odor in the media center. The town of Carey-Greenway Trail doesn't have a strong border to the school, so random people walk onto the campus during the day, which raises safety concerns. And that's in addition to lots of aesthetic issues like paint peeling significantly off all the walls in the school. While we appreciate the updates that have been made over the years, like a new fire alarm system and door locks, West Carey needs to be moved higher on the priority list of schools that need major renovations. Because of the poor conditions of the school, lots of our neighborhood families do not choose to go to West Carey. They choose to go to magnet schools like Greedy Creek Middle or Martin Middle, and it's West Carey's turn to be taken seriously. The school is under-enrolled and has become an overflow school because families are choosing not to attend there. I understand there are funding issues in our public school system and that this goes up the chain to our state legislators. We are very grateful for the work the school board tries to accomplish across Wake County with over 180,000 kids in the school system. We are also very thankful for Tyler Swanson and Mark Strickland and Dr. Sexton for taking the time to visit our school as well. The reality is, the kids at West Carey notice the other schools are in better condition, and they feel disrespected, and I'm sure the teachers and staff must feel it too. It is not a good learning environment for kids when it's unbearably hot or cold in the classroom or when the bathrooms are constantly not working. I'm asking you to please move West Carey into the top 10 schools that need serious repairs, so when there is another bond, we are insured a better facility. The school has been around for 60 years, and it's our turn now. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Jerry Hatzel, followed by Norris Collins.
My name's Jerry Hatzel. I've been a taxpayer here in Wake County for 46 years now. Our kids graduated from Anlo in 2004, 2006, and 2008. Our oldest grandchild just started Cone Elementary School. We think our tax dollars have been excellent investments. Our kids got excellent educations. Thank you. And thank you for being members of the school board. I know you don't do it for the money. I know it's not a springboard to hire office. The only reason I can think you do it is because you care about the kids. That's something we got in common. What I want to talk to you about for just a minute is electric school buses. Electric vehicles are more than just Teslas. School buses are ideally designed for electric drivetrains. They follow prescribed routes, so there's not an issue about range anxiety. They can be charged on off-hours when demand does not peak. And there are reasons other than just climate change, and climate change is a big deal. There are reasons other than just climate change to electrify the school bus fleet. Among other things, diesel exhaust harms children in ways it does not harm adults. Yesterday, my wife and I were pass, walking past our neighborhood elementary school, Wiley, on our way home from the grocery store. We saw one of the buses there idling by the curbside. It was 3:24 in the afternoon. School wouldn't let out for a few minutes, and I couldn't help but notice that the exhaust pipe in those buses is right about chest height for an elementary school kid. This afternoon, when I drove past the school on the way back from the airport, I noticed there were two buses idling. Now, it's not just an environmental issue, it's not just a climate issue, it's also an economic issue. Folks, I, I gave you the sites here in the handout, but if we switch to electric school buses, between federal grants and avoiding the need to spend $140,000 for diesel, you will save money. You will not have to go out of pocket for a new vehicle that will not get a, that will not last its entire 12 years. Whatever you're buying right now in the way of diesel buses, if, if it runs for 12 years, you're talking about through 2036. For the reasons I outlined on this sheet, I would ask you to help those of us who are citizens learn how we can keep abreast of school bus electrification, how we can learn about your plans, and how we can help you help us to electrify the fleet faster. Thanks for considering this, and thanks for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Hatzel. Our next speaker is Norris Collins, followed by Danny Loesch.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm very happy to be a Wake County employee of 10 years, and that I've gotten to spend all of those years at West Carey has been a blessing. There have been countless truly amazing people to come through our school, both staff and students alike. Unfortunately, while so many of us are proud to be members of the West Carey community, it's often hard to be proud of the building that we work in that so often feels as if it's deteriorating all around us and has been for as long as many of us can remember. In fact, many of us remember a time not too long ago when West Carey ranked much higher on the priority list. However, as the years have passed and the school condition continues to worsen, West Carey's position has dropped. At times, it can feel as though West Carey is falling through the cracks. So, at the beginning of the year, after having discussed the state of the building, a group of us put together a survey to try and quantify how the building's condition impacts the professional performance and the physical and mental well-being of the staff and how the state of the building might affect our students as well. Ironically enough, the very first day we met to begin discussions about what could be done about the building, a classroom across the hall had a pipe burst and flood out. As anyone, as someone who's closely reviewed the data we collected, the issues were numerous and wide-ranging. The stories shared, some of which you'll hear firsthand tonight, include but are not limited to classrooms leaking or flooding from pipes occasionally bursting or heavy rains. Various points over the last several years, both the 7th and 8th grade halls have had issues with sewage, the smell of which is not easy to forget. Other stories from across campus describe classrooms either being freezing cold or too hot, including our music rooms, which have had several students faint throughout this year. The more surveys we collected, the more issues piled up, from major cracks running along classroom walls in the 6th grade hall, to the moldy and dingy walls and floors throughout the building, and many more. The list is extensive indeed, but one of the major themes to arise was that of safety. We have a unique campus, one that is very open and spread out, but many of the staff have raised concerns over the safety of the school grounds, whether it be because the layout and the well-over-20 points of entry, including open areas that students must move through during class changes, or the fact that to get to our main athletic field and track, students must use a public greenway. Based on the overwhelming feedback we received, the team put together a petition, a petition which has collected over 80 staff signatures, one for every one of our colleagues. And so it is that with this that we come to you, because at the end of the day, we love our students, our jobs, our community, and it is our hope that you hear our stories, consider the asks that are in our petition, and take the steps needed to enable West Carey to be the learning environment it deserves to be. Having said that, I'd like to personally thank Tyler Swanson, who has already taken several steps to make us feel seen and heard, and as a whole, I appreciate everyone's time and consideration on these matters. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danny Loesch, followed by Emily Hooks.
Hi, my name is Danny Loesch. I've lived in Carey for about 24 years, and I'm here as a parent and a citizen. I've driven past West Carey many times, but never realized the state of disrepair it was in. Today, I'm here to talk about very needed and overdue renovations to West Carey Middle School. Counting students and faculty, these changes would impact over 900 people, not to mention their family members. I recently went on a tour of the school with my daughter, who is a rising 6th grader. Instead of feeling excited about this next big step, I was very dismayed at the rundown appearance of the school. I'm a military brat, and I've attended schools all over the world, and this is one of the worst I've seen, seen and smelled. During our tour, I noticed an odd smell in the media center, possibly mildew, I don't know, I'm not a restoration person, but the HVAC system not working in many of the classrooms, windows were open to cool down the room, which presents a security risk, damage to some walls, and the athletic courts and fields were terrible. Very much in need of serious repair. In addition, I was alarmed that there were so many open breezeways for kids to be out in the open. I've been told that the door locks also need to be updated. Needless to say, that I was shocked and dismayed that in this day and time that these things remain unaddressed. To, to put it bluntly, I spent a lot of sleepless nights after my child was accepted into West Carey Middle. I'm very concerned about our children learning in an environment that is not healthy, but especially that is not safe. Established in 1965, West Carey Middle School impacts not only its students and faculty, but also the community. It has the ability to draw families toward or away from the area. Because of my situation, I don't have a lot of choice in where I live or where I send my children to school. If I did have more choices, I may or probably would not have picked West Carey due to the shape of its, shape it's in and its security. I ask the school board to strongly consider some much-needed and long-overdue renovations to West Carey Middle School. I am very sure that I'm not the only parent who will lose sleep over the lack of security and safety. I thank you for your time and humbly ask you for your help. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Hooks, followed by Stacy Tash.
All right, so you've heard from all the adults, now I want to hear, I want you guys to hear from our kids. So this is straight from their mouths, and I called it from the mouths of babes, West Carey Student Voices. So the prompt that they were given from a student to them was, what would you like to see changed about West Carey? So I have 19 students' responses. Student 1, definitely the actual building itself. It's really old, and there's lots of bugs, and I'm really definitely a fair to bugs. Student 2, the AC inside my socialized classroom gets really hot. Student 3, maybe if we could change up the way the drainage system works so there wouldn't be any mishaps in the female bathrooms. The air conditioning. Student 5, I would like to have a longer lunch, because I don't think I have enough time to eat my lunch, and I also like to talk with my friends and stuff. Student 6, one thing I would like to see changes are the walls and the ceilings, because the ceilings are starting to fall apart and the walls have paint coming off. Student 7, maybe one big building instead of these individual buildings, because I really don't like walking outside, I don't feel safe. Student 8, renovate the bathrooms so that the stall locks work and are usable and the sinks are usable. Also, try to fix the sewage problem, because that's also very bad and smells bad. Student 9, I like to see the outdated buildings be repaired, as well as the air conditioner, because sometimes there's rooms that get like 89 degrees, and that's very hot. Student 10, I would like to take the lockers out of the hallways to make hallways wider, because there's always jams. Student 11, I would like to improve the doors so we can get in and out easily, and we don't have to bang on the doors to get inside. Student 12, the locker rooms. Student 13, I would like to see the classroom AC get fixed. For example, Mr. Collins or Ms. Grissom's AC doesn't work. On some days, it can be up to 80 degrees, especially on hot days, it can be really uncomfortable and distracting if you're trying to get your work done. Student 14, I would like to see the walls painted and make everything new. Student 15, the bathrooms. Student 16, I would like to change this into a whole-new school with whole-new technology, new offices, and new classrooms. Student 17, the gym. Student 18, probably school food. And the building, because it's really old and worn down, and there's just lots of bugs, and the school food isn't good either. Student 19, I would really love them to build a new building, because it's getting pretty old here, and I want to see more modernized stuff and everything. Even though it's a great school, you need to have a good learning environment, so I would need them to build a new school. Maybe someday soon. As you can see, our students are greatly attuned to our school building's needs and want their voices heard and taken seriously. They look forward to hearing from what the school board can do for them and their time here at West Carey. We also want to extend a special thank you to Tyler Swanson for coming out to West Carey and walking the entire campus, hearing the voices of our teachers and students, and being able to advocate for all of us. Thank you so much, Tyler.
I'm a parent of two elementary kids in Wake County, and one, I wanted to say thank you for all you do. Thank you for the OTs and the PTs here. One of my kids receives OT right now, he does not get it, but I thank you for all your services and social workers and just everyone here. But the reason I'm here to talk to you today is for my daughter, who goes to Wiley Elementary School. My daughter is fully deaf, and as a parent who is hearing and has also two other children who are hearing, it was very shocking to have a deaf child, but it has been a blessing to be immersed in this new culture, new environment, new language, and we were really excited for her to be placed at Wiley into their preschool program and making sure that she has all her services, including a full-time ASL interpreter. She had that last year, but unfortunately, this year she does not have one, and many of the kids in the classroom, well, everyone doesn't have one. And the school, her teachers, the staff have been amazing, and they do sign, but she and all the kids do deserve a full-time interpreter. That is how she's going to learn, that's how she's going to communicate, that's how she's going to increase her language skills and be prepared for kindergarten. Our goal for our child is not to send her out of the county, our goal for our child is for her to remain in the county, our goal for our child is to get her services within the county. She deserves it, as every other student in this county. My son gets his services, I'm sure other parents and their children get their services, so I'm just asking the board to really consider finding somebody full-time for Wiley Elementary School and for any child that is deaf or hard of hearing in the county, to make sure that they get their services that they need, so they can grow like any other child here. They can play with all the kids, not just having to be in one box and fit into only one community, that they can expand their experiences in the school system with their deaf friends and with their hearing friends. And so I just ask that you guys, even if it's the remaining of the school year, find somebody part-time. That's all I ask, but then really hope that for next school year, that there's a full-time interpreter, and that when she is going to kindergarten, that they will be an interpreter for her. So, just want to say thank you, and thank you for listening.
Next up is Leonard Fesher, followed by Herb Thames. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, everybody.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Leonard Fesher, and I teach 7th grade social studies at West Carey Middle School, and I have been proudly working there for 10 years now. I'm here tonight to talk about the school conditions, the building at West Carey Middle School. I teach in a classroom with no working HVAC, and many of my colleagues have had the same conditions in their classroom as well. When it gets hot and humid outside in the fall and spring, it makes learning extremely uncomfortable for my students. I have students with asthma, bad allergies, it is sometimes very difficult for us to breathe at times, especially for those of us still wearing masks due to COVID. Other teachers who have worked in this classroom before me have had those same concerns over the years. Our amazing head custodian, Ms. Murray, has had to put in multiple requests to the county over the past four, five years to have this issue addressed, and it was actually finally approved this year, and we are actually waiting an installment of our HVAC in the 7th grade hallway. Our students and our staff deserve safe and comfortable classrooms to learn and to teach Also, across the hall, there are classrooms that have leaks in their rooms every time there is a hard rain. The carpets get wet and mildewy. Ms. Murray, again, our amazing custodian, has used a fan to dry the carpets. One of the carpets in one of the classrooms a few years ago had to be replaced because of the smell of mildew and mold. Got so bad, it was starting to grow. However, there are still leaks in that very same classroom. Ms. Murray had to put in multiple requests to the county to have that issue fixed, but nothing, again, has been done about it. Again, we've had students with asthma and allergies that shouldn't have to breathe that in, that mold, that mildew. Our students, our staff deserve safe and comfortable classrooms, again, to learn and to teach in. All I'm asking, all we are asking, is that you hear our concerns on behalf of West Carey Middle School, and please act in the best interest of the students and the staff. Thank you so much for having us and for hearing us tonight.
Thank you. Since we're at the halfway point of our off-agenda folks, I just do want to have a quick reminder, because there is no timer working, to keep an eye out for Mr. Blumberg at the 32nd. You guys are all doing great, I'm just, the teacher in me has to do that reminder every once in a while, and just keep an eye out, and thank you so much. Mr. Fesher, Fesher?
Nope. That was Fesher.
Oh, Thames, I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me on task.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Thames, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, other board, Mrs. Swinson, thank you very much for what you're doing. My name is Herb Thames, and I've been an employee here at West Carey for, oh, too many years to count. Started at West Carey in 1988, so y'all do the math. West Carey is like home to me. I left in 95. Unfortunately, I lost my mother and had to move away to South Carolina, but was, returned to Wake County, because I love Wake County, have two sons that were educated in Wake County Public School System. Went back to West Carey just to say hello, and they said, you want your job back? And I said, yeah, I would love to have it back. I was disappointed, though, in coming back, because we had just had renovations done, and the school had just left Davis Drive, had returned back to West Carey. And coming back, I saw some of the same things that I had left. Saw some things that had not improved at all, termites coming through the floor. At that time, I was a healthful living teacher, and I can remember, before I could start my class, I would have to take a mat to put over the termites in order to have class. That problem continued, we have leak in the floor, had a trash can that sat in the corner. Every morning, I would walk in, if I didn't dump the trash can, I asked when the kids had dumped the trash can. The trash can ended up becoming a big, full-blown trash can. That problem consisted until, one day I walked in the gym and walked into two inches of water across our gym floor. We know water and wood doesn't go, don't go together. So after the water was gone, what did we end up having? A floor that was a bunch of waves. So we can imagine now, after all this time, as I was talking to my son last night, and he reminded me that, that was 20-plus years ago. I said, really? 20 years, and we're still dealing with this. I feel unsafe for the kids, not knowing if they're going to fall through the floor, because we know, again, with the termites, with the water damage, there's no telling what's under their floor. Facts or perception? I asked myself that as I was thinking about this presentation, facts or perception? When I talk to my colleagues that come in and I have to tell them it was like that before, and they say, really? Do they care about y'all? I said, mm, I think they care. Fact or perception? When we have to take that four-minute walk down to the football field to do a track unit or anything, fact or perception? When I look across and I can't see the students, because the field has a crown, not a crown, it has a hump on it, fact or perception? When our kids go and visit other schools and they say, Coach, why does our school don't look like this? Fact or perception? We just want an even playing surface? I don't want our school to be continued to call the ghetto school, because we were once the celebrity school, where the Charlotte Hornets, the Sting came in, and we presented the hop sports program to Wake County. We invited schools from all around Wake County to come and see what we did at West Carey, and one of the first middle schools to have fitness and aerobic room. All that's now been deteriorated and gone away. We'd like to see the cardholders on the right side, so the kids' traffic can be on the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Thames. Next up, we had a special request from the Middle Creek High School Theater Department to talk about Theater in Schools Month, so Maddie, Bella, Dare, Jack, Ren, and Hope have a presentation for us, and they're going to do this all in three minutes, y'all.
Hello. We are Act One, we are Middle Creek High School's theater leadership team. My name is Bella Gonzalez, and I'm the current president of Act One. This month is Theater in Schools Appreciation Month. This month highlights the importance of creating well-rounded students by integrating the arts into a student curriculum, more specifically theater. Our goal for this month was to help others understand why theater is so important to us. This month, we posted various things on Instagram where students were able to submit quotes or videos to talk about why theater was important to them and how it has affected them throughout the years, as well as coming here and speaking to you. Personally, for me, theater is a different way to learn about the world around us. Through storytelling and design, theater is a way to process emotions and create new bonds with everyone who participates.
Hello, I'm Ren. I am the International Thespian Society Vice President for our school and a future theater educator. I love theater, because it is a place where I feel wanted and valued for who I am as a human.
Hello, my name is Maddie, and I've been a part of my school's theater department for the last four years. Each year in our theater department, we have a theme that both of our shows encompass. This year, the theme for the shows is all about the family you find, and this theme is not only true for our shows, but for our whole theater department. Without theater programs in schools, so many passionate people will not be given memorable experiences and interactions with the people who share their same interests, and they would not be able to form their own found family.
Hello, my name is Hope Byrd, and I'm the International Thespian Society True President at Middle Creek, and if you would like to support us in our program, we will be putting on the musical James and the Giant Peach on April 20th through 22nd. Tickets go on sale on March 7th, March 27th, and you can follow us on Instagram or Twitter with @thehandleMCHS underscore theater for more information and links provided.
James and the Giant Peach is a great show for anyone of all ages, so we hope you all come to support. Thank you so much for your time, and we hope to see your continued support for theater in schools. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, we have Tawana Murray, followed by Kimberly McTarian.
Hello, my name is Tawana Murray. I'm the head custodian at West Carey Middle School, and I've been in Wake County for almost seven years. I've been a floater for a year and a half until I came to West Carey Middle School. When I first came to Murray, I mean, West Carey Middle School, Ms. People, our sister principal hired me, and they walked me around the school, and they asked me, what is wrong with the school? And I began to tell them, the walls is dirty, the paint is coming off, it was just so filthy. They was like, well, can you clean it up? I said, I can try. So I tried, and it didn't work, so I went to Mr. James, as our sister principal, and I told him, I said, we need a paint job in the cafeteria in the bathrooms. And I fought for that for a year, and he got it done for me. Now it's back peeling, and I'm gonna talk about safety. On Friday, we had a guy that pulled our door open and came in our school. It's not safe for the kids, it's not safe for the staff, and I'm the one walks to school every day. I'm in the school at 5:30 in the morning, and I make sure our kids and our teachers is safe. I do not let you come in our school till I know who you are. Thank you.
Ms. Murray, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And you will be followed by John Amancu.
Good afternoon, well, good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Dr. Kimberly McTarian. I am the proud president of Save Our Sons and the CEO of SOS Consulting Firm. And as a history teacher, I'm often reminded that history means in the past, but it is a dangerous thing for our history to follow our present. And as you can remember, May 30th, 2020, we heard the cries of George Floyd scream for his mother for his very life. Well, I can assure you that there is a population of black men who may be heard but not understood. Why? Because they are the black autistic of your population. And yes, they will grow up, and they won't look little anymore. They will be adults that could be someone's target practice. And so today, I ask of you, Wake County Board of Education, along with your racial equity and inclusion, to protect this population. Why? Because we have gotten, received stories where officers assume that they have done something wrong and pull guns on our children before getting on the bus. Now, the wonderful scary portion of this is that anytime an officer uses excessive force, it is protected under General Statute 168-168, which means it's under personnel records, and that our children's encounter with the cops is not brought to the public, which means if our children do not tell you that they encountered an officer with a gun, no one has to tell it. Can you imagine sending our children from the poorest neighborhoods to encounter an officer with a gun? Get on the bus and now have to take EOGs and EOCs? This is not, nor should it be, normal. I'm not here to practice or talk about critical race theory, because race is not critical, hate is critical, and hate protected is dangerous. I am asking the Wake County Board of Education to pass a resolution that protects this class, disabled and African-American. I hope that you will support an action that protects with your racial equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Amancu, followed by Adam Tollrand.
All around the country, this image is used as a depiction to explain equality and equity. But here's the flawed logic of equity. The tall gentleman has to give up his crate so that the short person can stand on the crate. Here's a better idea, instead of watching the game for free from the fence, how about purchasing a ticket to get in the game and sit in the bleachers along with the rest of the crowd? The Office of Equity started in 2013, and this year marks the 10-year anniversary of this PET project. Since 2014, $8.7 million and counting has been spent on race baiting, race hustling, reducing standards, CRT, grooming, and normalizing transgenderism, instead of appropriately labeling it as gender dysphoria. And where are the measurable outcomes from the Equity Office? This is what we do know. Nearly 50% of our graduating class in 2021 failed math and reading standards, while we tout that we have a 91% graduation rate. All students have a 6 out of 10 chance to pass state exams in grades 3 through 8. Black students have a 4 out of 10 chance to pass all state exams in grades 3 through 8. This is the hard truth that no one will tell you. Equity will not fix the dire marriage rate in the black community. 80% of black homes are led by a single parent, and statistics show that this has a negative impact on children mentally, socially, and academically. Going woke won't bring daddy home. The answer is not diversity, equity, and inclusion. The answer is faith, family, morality, and education void of special interests. Equity is the transmission of a disease called communism. Equity lowers the bar, overlooks merit, and puts the focus on skin tone only. Equity is legalized theft, because it takes from the productive person and gives to the unproductive person. In the early 2000s, there was a two-to-three-year waitlist to be a Wake County teacher. Today, we're approximately 400 teachers short. The general feedback that I hear from teachers is that the focus is on equity, 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 more equity, and more and more equity. Instead of focusing on the equity, the teachers don't have the ability to even discipline the students and correct their violent behaviors. I believe that we need to take the money from the Equity Office and put it towards repairing West Carey.
Adam Tollrand, followed by Christine. Adam Tollrand, followed by Christine Janekka.
Good evening, and you got my time, right? Awesome, thanks, man. Appreciate you, appreciate you. I'm a teacher at West Carey Middle School. I taught fifth grade for four years at Bug Elementary in Southeast Valley before that. Super pumped to come over to West Carey and teach helpful living because, doggone it, teaching one subject is way better than teaching however many I taught before. So, West Carey's an awesome place. And if you haven't figured it out yet, I'm going to be talking about West Carey, talking about the building and the people there. I was really struck as, you know, coming over as my first year at West Carey, I was really struck by a couple of things. First of all was, when I got there, the people that were there, it was very, very apparent that, I mean, if you know teachers, the teachers that stick around, they're there because they love kids and they're doing something that they love. We're not, we're not there because we get paid good, but we like what we do and we care about kids, that's why we're there, right? And the second thing I was struck by was the way that I felt when I walked through the building and around the campus. Okay, so like, if you ever go there, you're going to see the stuff. Like, we're not going to tell you about what's wrong, right? You can see it. The student's going to tell you about it, but like, I was really struck by the way I felt when I walked into the building and I walked around that campus. Because you don't got to walk very far to see something that looks like it was forgotten. When you walk around that campus, you feel like you are in a place that has been forgotten. Okay? So I want you to think about the last time that you felt forgotten. Think about where you were when you felt forgotten. Okay? Did you want to go back there? Were you super psyched to go back the next day? Okay? So, we could talk all day, you know, and all night, and I know there's other things that we got to do, but we could talk all day and all night about the stuff that needs to get fixed, the fact that we do need a new school, like, there's too much to fix, but we have to fix the stuff that we can fix to get through till we can get the new stuff, right? Or a new place. But I really want you to sit with that because that's what we do every day and that's what our kids do every day. We go back to a place where we feel like we are forgotten. And we just don't want to be forgotten anymore. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Next up, Christine Janekka, followed by Daniel Grant King.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm happy to see Mr. Swanson. He came to West Carey Middle School and we were all excited to meet him and see him involved. My name is Christine Janekka, I'm a special education teacher in a self-contained classroom in West Carey. The room that we're in is uncomfortably cold most days of the week, so the air conditioner, it runs very strong and actually causes the temperature in the room to drop as the day goes on. Because my teaching area is special education self-contained, the students and the three staff members are in the room all day, so we don't change rooms with the bell schedule. So many of the children, because of their disabilities, have difficulty with wearing extra layers or tolerating appropriate attire, covering up and the distraction caused by this discomfort. So we tried opening the window on mild days to bring in some warmer air, but this has also proved distracting to the students, not to mention the possibility of bugs or birds or noise, outside noise entering the room. When we spoke up about this to the administrative staff members back in, I think it was December, the temperature became quite comfortable. So this was only for a couple of weeks, though. So during the period of mild weather, one of our students with communication difficulties told me he was cold during seated instruction time. Sometimes we get up and move around for an extra brain break or try to go outside for warmth and to move around, but this is not practical, it's not a long-term solution. So the adults and students in the room, we wear coats from morning till afternoon and our classroom is in a part of the building not slated for the HVAC replacement. So I hope the board will consider the needs of my students and the rest of the students at West Carey and ensure that our school gets the needed repairs.
Next up is Daniel Grant King. Is Mr. Grant King here? Our final speaker is Pamela Buddha. Ms. Buddha, are you here?
Is this, this isn't working?
That's not working, so at...
I set up my phone.
Thirty seconds, you don't have to worry about that, Mr. Bloomberg has it. He'll let you know when there's 30 seconds and then you'll hear his phone when the time is up.
Okay. Good evening, school board member, Superintendent Moore and Attorney Bloomberg. Appreciate the time tonight to share. I'm here to follow up, I was here last month, I was here asking about money that's owed to us and I'm here tonight wanting to get that money. I wanted to follow up, last time, board chair, you had asked a Wake County employee who was the chief business officer to meet with me and nothing got resolved. So I wanted to, and I have the documents back at my desk, so I'll give that to you, Attorney Bloomberg, after. But I'm here requesting that Wake County be transparent and accountable in financial auditing areas and budgeting areas. I'm here tonight to request that since 2021, we've been asking for receipts from Wake County Public Schools so that we would know that the reimbursement check that was given to us or sent to us 2020 was actually accurate. And I was just doing due diligence in good faith to say, "Hey, send us the receipt so we know that this is accurate. You overcharged us by $645.17. That's a huge error." So how do I know if this check is true and accurate? And I don't want to cash it if it's not because I don't want to go through a year or two of someone saying, "Oh, you cashed a check and you owe us something." And I had just gotten a check from someone and they had, and that check on the bottom of it said, "When you cash this, you're cashing this saying you know that it's true." And it was like, "I didn't even ask for the check." So I called that company, asked them, we clarified it and they're like, "Yeah, you're owed that check." So I did the same with Wake County. So I'm asking for due diligence and, you know, we asked, we acted in due diligence to not cash the check and to wait until we got the receipts. We weren't given any copied receipts and at this point, I wonder if any receipts even exist. It's been from 2020. The check has not been cashed. So I'm concerned that Wake Board of Education investigates before the state, a statute of limitation expires because there's been so much pushback to actually resolve a very simple matter. And then, how much time do I have, does it say? And then I'm asking for Wake County to address if interest is due to us. So with the chief business officer, I said, "No one has addressed whether we have interest due to us." Our money was taken, we were overcharged, it was overcollected, and then it was held. The field trip ended in March 5th, 2019, check was issued in June 2020 and we were never given interest due, even though you had my personal money and I think many other parents' personal money. So we'd like to know if there's interest due and we'd like Wake County to address it. They haven't addressed it with us. Finally, I'd like to know, they said the check was moved to the state. I don't know why Wake County would send a check that hasn't been proved accurate and if it had been proved, we would have cashed it. Why did that check go to the state? Who sent it to the state? Where is it at the state and how do we get access to our money? It's been just...
The big goals, to help inform what those big goals would look like, the groups that have been...